He's been the coach when I.
Really?
Where was that? I know they offered him a ton of money in money talks.
Welcome, everybody.
I guess I like it. And you're more.
To welcome everybody to East Dundee's regular board meeting dated Monday, December 6th, 2021, six o'clock. Catherine, can take the.
Trustee Mahoney.
Here.
Trustee Andreessen.
Here.
Trustee Coonsy.
Present.
Trustee Burton.
Here.
Trustee Saviano.
Here.
Trustee Triver.
Here.
And President Ryan.
Here. And if you like.
Let me lead this to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. That brings us to item three, which is agenda items, public comment for agenda items. Is anybody in the audience like to address the board on an agenda item? Okay. Does anybody would like to address the board? See, none. Okay, then we have no consent agenda. That takes us right to our business agenda. And we have item A, if I could get a motion.
I'll make a motion to give advice and consent to the appointment by the village president of Erica Storley to the office of village administrator for term through April 30th, 2025, and until her successor is appointed and has qualified.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
Trustee Coonsy.
Yes.
Trustee Burton.
Yes.
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
And Trustee Triver.
Yes.
Very wonderful. That takes us to item B, if I could have a motion. I will move to approve an ordinance approving an employment agreement with the village administrator, Erica Storley. Second?
Second.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
Trustee Coonsy.
Yes.
Trustee Burton.
Yes.
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
And Trustee Triver.
Yes.
That brings us to item C, which is, right hand, Erica Storley is having village administrator. Okay? If you would.
I, Erica Storley.
I, Erica Storley.
Having been appointed to the office of village administrator.
Having been appointed to the office of village administrator.
Of East Dundee.
Of East Dundee.
In Cook and Kane Counties.
Cook and Kane Counties.
State of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of village administrator.
Of the office of village administrator.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. Can I say a few words?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. Well, first and foremost, I wanted to thank you all for this incredible opportunity. I am wildly impressed with East Dundee, and I'm really enthusiastic about being part of this incredible team. I'm looking forward to getting to know the residents here, and the board, and to report the president. I'm looking forward to helping you achieve your vision for your community. And I would also like to say thank you to my family for being here tonight and, uh, rest in peace. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So I think City Kay will see you.
Uh, yeah, she actually will be seated just because we will have to ship it all this down.
Oh, okay, that's all right.
Yeah. So, um, okay, so now, um, we have item D, which is, uh, yeah, I have a motion. I move to approve a resolution adding Erica Storley as an authorized signatory on certain bank accounts of the village of East Dundee. And second?
Second.
Okay.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
Trustee Coonsy.
Yes.
Trustee Burton.
Yes.
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
And Trustee Triver.
Yes.
All right. Okay. Well, that brings us to our next over the village, which, well, item E, if I could have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept a resolution of trustees Scott Andreessen, given by Sarah Wilson, to the appointment by the village president of Andy Sauter, to the office of village trustee, to fill the seat vacated by Scott Andreessen, for a term through May 1st, 2023, and until their successor is elected and qualified.
Second? Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
Trustee Coonsy.
Yes.
Trustee Burton.
Yes.
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
And Trustee Triver.
Yes.
And that will take us to item F, then, which is swearing in of trustee E, but we should give Scott a second. Oh.
Okay, let me share this up to this point. Um, well, again, you know, I agreed to extend my term back in April or better May, but I thought it was the best interest of the village for me to do so. Uh, it's been a, it's been a very interesting six months subsequent to that, six, seven months, whatever it's been. And so I, then, you know, now I've resigned, and I've agreed to cut my term short, I, in the belief that it hopefully will be in the best interest of the village of East Dundee. I would just ask the, the board of village presidents, now that there is a new village administrator, and now that within probably the next 30 seconds, we've got a new person sitting in my seat, that the distractions that have prevented the full operations of this board and the functioning of this village to this point will come to a halt, so that I'm not getting out of my seat for no reason. Other than that, this is by far the best board I've ever had a governor to sit on. You guys are amazing. I mean, the, the work I've seen, the cooperation, the effort, the diligence, the level-headedness is something I've never experienced on another board before, and I've said a lot of them because I can't say no. And, uh, the village is standing lucky to have each and every one of you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Robert.
Yeah.
Thank you for what you did.
All right, so that will take us to item F. Catherine, will you be the swearing in of village trustee Andy Sauter? Amy?
Yeah, sure. I, Andy Sauter.
I, Andy Sauter.
Having been appointed to the office of village trustee.
Having been appointed to the office of village trustee.
In the village of East Dundee.
In the village of East Dundee.
In Cook and Kane Counties.
In Cook and Kane Counties.
State of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of village trustee.
Of the office of village trustee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. And just say thank you to the board and village president for appointing me in this opportunity. Really look forward to continuing the great work that's already in effect for the town. Live and work in East Dundee, and have lived here for about 12 years, and really excited to be a part of the change that's already happened in the town, so thank you.
And since I've already told that you don't have to stay the rest of the day, I'm gone. Go, everybody.
Much love. Bye, sir. Thanks again. Thank you.
Okay, that will take us to item G, which is a discussion and motion to approve dates for the St. Patrick's Day parade. Hey, well, it's got, so, um, I think.
Hello, everyone, I'm back again. This time it's gonna stick, I'm pretty sure. Uh, we are looking to do the St. Patrick's Day parade on March 12th, which is the Saturday before St. Patrick's Day, and to do the fireworks on the following Saturday, which will be the 19th, Saturday of March 19th. So, uh, like to get that on the books, get that approved, so we can get going, and, um, see what we can do. I know we've a lot of work to do, public work, police, fire, everybody to make sure everything's safe and operating really well, and to do the best job we can to keep it, you know, the safe home family event that we always do for the full day of it, and then, you know, go from there, so, yeah. So, looking forward to working with you all again, and I hope you guys all approve. Any questions, anyone?
Do you have any major changes or?
I don't think there's any major changes. No, I do not think there's anything major. I just, you know, of course, you know, in alignment with the times and with security, as you guys always know, I'm always yelling about security, and we're big on that, just to make sure that everything is safe and secure for our residents and for anybody and any of our visitors, and we keep it as safe as we can. So that's really important to me, and so whatever, anything actually we may have to do this year compared to previous years, then, you know, we're gonna have to look into that to do what we can, keep everybody safe, keep our routes safe, and keep, um, you know, all our exit strategies away from any of those. Something?
What we can do, let us know.
You guys know where I am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That will bring us to item H, if I could have a motion.
Um, we have to make a motion.
We need a motion.
Yes.
Yes, we have to make, that's right, I'm sorry, we have to move on to page two.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the date.
Oh, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the date for St. Patrick's Day parade, March 12th, which is going to come to fireworks following March 19th.
I'll start it. Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sauter. Trustee Coonsy.
Yes.
Trustee Burton.
Yes.
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
And Trustee Triver.
Yes.
All right. So now we're gonna go to item H, if I could have a motion.
Is this a motion or is it just a discussion?
It's actually a amendment.
No. It's too late. Discussion is all. Is a motion for discussion and consideration of the order submitting the number of the year's basis?
So, the, the word consideration is sufficient notice in order to pass the orders.
Okay, thank you. That's why I just wanted to make sure.
So, yes, consideration implies that you're gonna take a vote, but it's sufficient for it. If it just said discussion, you wouldn't be able to pass it. It's not, because it's a discussion, it's a. But the motion to approve. It's not considered.
Is there that comment?
Well, well, I personally have a motion for a table, because we're discussing it right now. Um, I did have one question, because it looks like the drawing is backwards.
Yeah.
That it's labeled incorrectly. Um, they currently occupy on the screen, it currently occupy the side to the right, they're expanding to the left. I think it's just, I think it's just mislabeled, but I want that kind of put in, but the drawing is mislabeled.
No, the drawing is a picture. Oh, no, yes, the drawing, the drawing is labeled, yes. The.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's just the, the label is.
That was my answer, he had to say no.
Yeah, okay, yeah, no worries. I've been in there enough times, I'm like a scat.
And I'll show you where I live.
Yeah, this is where I sit.
Uh, just something for, um, the new board members. The number of, uh, permits we have, uh, is not a set number, and every time somebody goes down or gets rid of their machines, we lower that number by that business. This permit will only be for this business, and the reason that we always wanna keep it the same number that we have, that everyone that wants one has to come for us.
That's, that's a great explanation.
I didn't know why, to begin.
That's for legal reasons. It's to give you the most flexibility to grant license to the business that we get the senior.
I think, great. So, we have consensus, I should ask, and to, somebody can make a motion now. Now approve.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to approve an ordinance for maybe the number of permits for one, for three, four.
Trustee Mahoney. And just, just one point of clarification, I'm sorry. Um, so the permit covers five gaming channels, if they're asking.
Up to five.
Up to five? They're asking for four. Up to six? Okay.
Yeah.
I said it's eight.
Six, yeah. It's like plus five, that's gone.
So it will be, so it will be. It will be. Okay, great.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sauter.
Yes.
Trustee Coonsy.
Yes.
Trustee Burton.
Yes.
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
And Trustee Triver.
Yes.
Wonderful. This takes us to item I, if I could have a motion. I will move to approve a change order number one, which revises the project completion date to May 31st, 2022, and increases the contract price to $669,215,000 and zero cents for the Route 25 water tower repainting and rehabilitation, rehabilitation project. Second?
Second.
Discussion. Well, it sounds like this is necessary work, and it's not a big increase in the project at first.
That's correct.
At $3,000.
$2,300.
And again, that increases for.
We are welding, instead of everything, it's a part. On the fill and draw pipe inside the tower, so the water that fills up the wet interior and drains it, we have connections on there for injecting chemicals, uh, either the water that flows through that pipe. Up to this point, we had banded connections, uh, steel bands were connecting the devices and the leaders and whatnot, and chemical feed, uh, systems. What we desire to do to replace that, is a substantially better improvement, is to weld these connections out instead of using steel band.
Then something you ought to consider, length of the Route 68 tower?
Yes.
Are they gonna, I am in judgment, I am, lately, are they gonna leave that turbo? Oh, it is done.
So the top is down, the, the tower itself is in a primed state, um, and the paint manufacturers, those are consultant contractors, have indicated that's awkward, that's fairly common practice for new tank fills, or privates, and then when the season changes, uh, they leave it in a primed state before they apply the additional, for, in our case, it'll be additional force of paint, essentially.
Are they gonna prime it again? Is there a time period for the primer that they need to find?
I'm not sure if spot priming is necessary, it'll remain as is, and a prime call might be changed. But what we'll do is, with our consulting contractor, it is, I would get in the spring, and we can areas of the attention.
So they'll resume work when March?
Soon as the weather breaks, yep.
Okay, Catherine?
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sauter.
Yes.
Trustee Coonsy.
Yes.
Trustee Burton.
Yes.
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
And Trustee Triver.
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you. So that brings us to item J, if I could have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution approving a contract agreement between the village of East Dundee and Hughes Environmental Consulting, Inc., for the wastewater operator services.
Second?
Any discussion on this?
This is essentially a renewal of the existing contract, who's, uh, the same rate in our year.
That's correct. Same, uh, personnel, too, correct?
Same person, yes, that's correct. Uh, what we're, two years ago, we, the village board approved a two-year agreement, what we're recommending, and what I recommend now, is essentially a one and a half year agreement to line up his disagreement with our fiscal year, so, so November, November, we'll give us proof, April, 2024.
Okay, any consensus? Uh, Catherine?
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sauter.
Yes.
Trustee Coonsy.
Yes.
Trustee Burton.
Yes.
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
And Trustee Triver.
Yes.
Item K, if I could have a motion. I will move to approve an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2021, and ending April 30th, 2022, for the village of East Dundee. Second? Anybody?
I'll start.
Oh. Okay, is there any discussion on this? Anybody?
No, this will be, I just could just give us a general background on this. So, um, annually, the village has to levy taxes, um, which is around this time, we present some kinds of board. Um, we, um, are limited to retail for our, um, taxes, this is annually, it's a self, self-imposed, um, ordinance that we decided to adopt, um, maybe a few years ago, um, after we had a whole, whole rule issue, um, and as well as to keep the taxes as low as possible. Our taxes, um, all go to our police pension fund, um, and as you can see in our packet today, we included the statutory minimum contribution amount that we receive from water, rock, and oil. It's not the max contribution recommendation that they would require, um, but it does, um, meet the minimum requirement of five DOA, or DOI, sorry. This year, we are recommending a 1.4% increase in our tax levy, which would, um, increase the tax levy, um, $697,706. Last year, the tax levy was, um, $682,000. I don't know if that's any official information.
No, but just so everybody knows, that the amount we're talking about, the 1.4% increase, is only going to be on the villagers' portion of your property tax. If your property tax bill is not a 1.4% increase on the bottom line, it's only on the East Dundee portion of that, which is just under 2% of the total. So we're going to increase that by 1.4%. If you do the math on that, it's a miniscule amount, on a $5,000 per year assessment, you're talking about a dollar and a half increase. Um, I had spoke with, with Brandis on this one, too, and, um, sought to discuss the idea of increasing that from 1.4 to 2.1, reducing the easy math. A 2.1 increase as opposed to a 1.4 gets us to the amount that Rocket Amen recommends that we put into the police pension. Uh, with this year's assessment, it will only get us $700,000, and so we're still gonna be about $400,000 short. Um, we're gonna have to work that out, but of course, too, we've got another 20 years to, you know, to work through it. Um, and, uh, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't be adjusting it now, and we could be with just a little bit more of an adjustment, maybe once there's property taxes increased, I understand that, but at the same time, the state is telling every municipality in the state that we have to have police pension 90% funded by the year 2040. So, um, just to ease everyone's mind, or stop to push that to 2050. However, we still need to adjust now, because every time we push it down the road, we have to make up that much more down the road. So, um, I'm gonna look to future years to maybe exceed what we talked about as far as people, and we can do that because we're local, so, um, we'll look to that.
And we can do that if we change the ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we did it a couple years prior, where there was a 13% increase, because we had, um, I believe, you know, inappropriately letting, or abated back the levy, uh, in each of five years in a row, and didn't collect anything. So with that, um, that was, uh, how can we put it? I don't wanna say mismanagement, but it wasn't the, you know, the most, um, you know, forward-looking type of news that we could have made, so what we did was to go ahead and, yeah, amend that ordinance to allow us to increase it by 13%, and that got us back, uh, well over, you know, 50%, around, I think, around 51 or 52, but at one time we were over 60. Um, so hopefully we'll, in the next, you know, 10, 15 years, get, you know, East Dundee, that's gonna require some work and some sacrifice, so when we get there, we'll keep discussing this.
Any other questions on this item?
Yeah, so my, my one question here is, is actually, East Dundee has two lines. One is for the village of East Dundee, and one is for the police pension. So where does this one line?
For.
So the, all of the money collected, durable, Kane County, Cape County, all those to, um, the county.
Okay.
East Dundee says zero.
Zero. Yeah.
Yes. We collect zero.
Zero.
Right. Right, we don't get our hands on it. Okay, hopefully things add nonetheless, so. Any, any, anybody else? Okay, great, moving on. Oh, I'm sorry. Roll.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sauter.
Yes.
Trustee Coonsy.
Yes.
Trustee Burton.
Yes.
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
And Trustee Triver.
Yes. Okay, thank you all. And that will take us to our last item, I'm gonna do today, that's item L, if I could have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution establishing a regular meeting dates and committee of the whole meeting dates for the board of trustees, and establishing planning and zoning and district commission meeting dates for the village of East Dundee for the calendar year.
Second?
Any questions on that? We got, handed to us a list of all those dates coming up in 2022, this is kind of upkeep, if you will.
Trustee already looked around holidays and that type of.
Yeah, this is required by the, we exactly said, we said, we press.
Sure.
I do have a question. We had some, um, discussion about, I think, and just raise things I've heard about the planning zoning meetings moving back to six. Is that something for now? Six o'clock, six, look, the time will be backwards.
Oh, oh, oh.
Do a different, I'm sorry.
Instead of seven?
Yeah, instead of seven.
Thank you. We might be able to, we can just, we're in a hard discussion, too, with the, the current board members of the planning and zoning commission, and so, yeah, they sort of had earlier that, I know.
Yeah, and, and sure, we were discussing seven o'clock, and we're a little.
Sure.
Late, especially in conversations, because like, I mean, I know that we're not having the meetings very regularly at this point.
Yeah, well, it'd probably benefit some of the addition, which were coming before, you know.
Right. For me, yeah, to. Close your business hours, and things like that, so I think it'd be more discussing making that decision, and stuff.
And if it is changed, you can do an amendment to the calendar schedule and not have to publish them as specials for the rest of the year.
Awesome, thank you.
Right, Fran, do you have any comments on that? You're on that commission, do you have any objection or see any problems with moving the time from seven to six?
Um, for some, it might be, I mean, the, the reality is, is that, in my opinion, is that meetings are supposed to be convenient for the public, not for staff, and not for the board, but for the public, and people that, people that have more than an hour And people that, people that have more than an hour drive or an hour travel from their job, if they get off at five o'clock, can't be here. So, I, I mean, I, I think if you look around and visit most other municipalities, they start their meetings at seven or seven thirty. And I, I believe that's for the public's benefit, not for the board and that. I understand staff gets here at seven or eight o'clock, and then they have to stay late for a meeting. But that's part of the job when you work for government.
Do you know, well, we could talk to some of the other board members, sort of all the commission members.
Yeah.
They have to work too, so they might be caught up in this.
Yeah, I mean, I could be here at four o'clock, but.
Yeah. Okay. All right, does anybody else have any questions on this item, the dates?
Trusty Molly?
Yes.
Trusty Satter?
Yes.
Trusty Crumsey?
Yes.
Trusty Burton?
Yes.
Trusty Sagiano?
Yes.
And Trusty Trig.
Yes.
Okay, so moving on, we have financial reports warrants list within the packet. If you have any questions on that one, we could address those to Brandis. It'll take us to reports, I'll start out. I just, I, I just wanna say, I'm, was really, really overwhelmed with the participation and the attendance at the Dickens and Dundee event. It's an amazing amount of work that goes into that, and I'd really like to take my hat off to staff, Catherine, Dale, Tracy, and Phil, your guys, they just, they worked up great. The town, the downtown is wonderful. So, again, it was, if there was someone told me five hundred people down there, I wouldn't be surprised. It was really hell, and I don't know if you raised or how, but, yeah. It was, the weather held, everything was, was very well done and, you know, coordinated wonderfully. So, I appreciate all the work on that. That's all I have. Well, it's just like the welcome, I remember, trustee member does well, Andy, welcome to the board. And we'll just swap around the room here. Sarah, who'd like to start?
Uh, no report.
No report. Any?
Uh, no report.
Come on, come on.
I'm here almost now.
Okay, Catherine?
Um, a couple of things, welcome to Erica and to Andy. We're looking forward to working with you. Again, Dickens and Duck D, the evening was fabulous, chief. I saw a great presence by the, by the officers.
Thank you.
I think there were about four down there that I saw.
Oh, four of them.
And appreciated your presence, definitely. Not that the crowd really needed it, but it was a nice show. The parade the next day was awesome, thanks to the, all the fancy new trucks that we have that sparkled in the sun, as well as the other trustees that marched quite a long time, along with family and friends that helped pass out. Yes, also, the Sunday after, after Thanksgiving, there was a really cool event that a private group put on. Tricia is a part of, it was a really nice event that, it was actually out of private establishment, but it was so successful that it looks like they'll try and do something this summer again. And I, I just wanted to bring this up. It's, it was a great measure of, a show of inclusion. It was very joyful, it was around the celebrating the tent, that was a three of the last don't tell. It benefited a military group out of Chicago that helps veterans. So, it was, it was a really, really wonderful event, very well attended. And I just wanna bring this up as a way for other groups to be able to use the great facilities that we have in the village, with the latrine, the depot area, and also encourage our other businesses to have events like this that support the community as a whole. So, thank you, Tricia, for the great work your group does, and look forward to the next one.
Uh, well, I was wondering if you would have a short, extended session after this meeting to discuss. And I was wondering, Eric, if you would have a few minutes just to sit in with us on that.
Sure.
That's all. Okay. Do you have? Rich? Can you?
You guys cover the, the report.
And Tricia?
I just wanna welcome Andy and Erica, and I think since we was fantastic. But if there was one thing I want to say that I brought awareness to this, this year. My dad has car accidents, had it for twenty years, so I brought him to be about in a wheelchair. And I've noticed with like popcorn stands on the sidewalks and stuff, it made it really hard for me to get my dad around. So, I think we need to also be really aware of what businesses are pitched outside on the sidewalks. Because I wouldn't have thought of it until I brought him there and then had some, you know, some issues getting around. So, that was just something I wanted to make be aware of. But it was phenomenal, he loved it, the tree, the ceremony, everything, it was amazing. So, it was, it's a great town, and my parents recently moved in, and are really grateful for it. So, we, we all appreciate it.
Yeah, we should just give her some ability.
Accessibility, yeah.
As, as part of the thinking.
Yes, that's, that's.
We, 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 the, the.
Small city. Yeah, not a big deal, yeah, yeah. It's a building.
I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't, in my report, didn't mention that. He's gonna be, he's excited, please. So, all right, well, that takes us to public comments. Is there anybody who would like to address the board on a, either a agenda or not?
Yeah.
I, I. Who's here?
Yes, you can back for a vacation.
Oh, Brandis, what?
I just wanted to inform the board that we'll start working on the budget zone. So, be prepared for the budget workshops and all of that, and we can address, further address the police pension issue there. We're almost finished with audit, so hopefully by, when we enter, early February, we'll have a report coming. And welcome to me, trustee, and to Erica, with the fourth order. That's it.
Chris? Uh, no report, no report. Joe? The street program is wrapped up, so if you left, we'll do a quick check in the spring, make sure the grass goes good. Right there. Chief?
Thank you for your nice comments about the police presence at the parade. It gives me an opportunity to say that we have plenty of help. Hanover Township provided five officers and three vehicles, and Kane County Office of Emergency Management gave us four of each, which is terrific. It sure helps with the police presence. And given about, given the tragedy that was caused by the terrorist parade, I mean, we're really on high alert, no question about that. Luckily, there were no incidents of any kind that went across, with perfect safety on the school.
Thank you.
Phil?
Just a quick mention, we're ready for snow ice, if you want to come, so hopefully go right in the end. And then, well, five, log well five is still, still down. We're, we've gotten some proposals to get it back into service at some point, and will likely involve full report consideration based on the scope of work that we need to get, get it back to the line.
That's the deep well?
Uh, the shallow.
What's the shallow?
Yeah, the shallow well, we have water. So, currently, the deep well and then one of our backup wells are both providing water to the issues.
All right, now, then no other reports, so now we can say, does anybody like to adjust the board on either a, agenda or not agenda, I know we kind of had a missed up there, so.
Uh, is that, is that?
Yes.
And we have some handouts, is that what we have on the board? Okay, thank you. Well, good evening, my name is Erin Schreuer, and I'm here tonight as a resident of West Dundee, but as somebody that actually works here at East Dundee. And I'm here tonight in a different capacity than I normally see you. It's to give a development proposal for a property that the village actually owns. So, first, a little bit about the group that I represent tonight. If you turn to the first page, Fox River Players is a theater group. Back in twenty eighteen, my sister and I, who's also one of the directors, started this group in partnership with the Park District, because we realized there was no place for our children to do theater in East Dundee and West Dundee and St. Paul County. We had to go to Elgin, we had to go to Crystal Lake, we had to go to Schaumburg, and we said, wow, there's this tiny little space, if you went to the senior center, if you go to the Rayco Center, there's a little stage. Most of the time, that space is used for being grownups and crafts and things like that for seniors. But we said, we'd really love to try a theater program for children. And so, we were hoping we could get twelve, design our kids up, of course, we were hoping to get twelve. Then for our first production, Theater Fan, we had twenty. Since that time, we had a waiting list for this program. We doubled in size, we still have a waiting list. We've done more than a dozen productions there with them. But what we're looking for is a permanent home that we can use all year round, and we can bring things for adults as well as children. So, concerts, plays, musicals, that sort of thing. So, the next page, what property am I talking about? This is property I will sell, we have toured before. It's a very unique space. It's the six eleven, the old Senate School, six eleven East Main Street, where there's some government offices, there's an event gallery, and there's an old gymnasium. And the first time I walked into the gymnasium, I was like, this is it, this could be the space. I just felt right away. And it's about three thousand square feet, it's suite one thirteen. So, it's right there, kind of on the corner, powered in seventy-two. There's no electricity running out, there's no heat, there's no air, so it's kind of just a shell. But again, I think the potential and the size could be just perfect. So, the next page shows the current use. So, the Dundee Township Historical Society has been using it for several years to store their antiques and treasures. They have a sale that happens once a year. So, we've got this building in this space that is essentially being used like for two days a year, right? They are looking to move that sale, looking to a different type of fundraiser, because it is a fundraiser for them, and I've talked with them, and they're, they're open to ideas. So, it's currently being used for that. The proposed use, which is on the next page, would be for a community theater, possibly a, like a black box style, which is pictured, or maybe even a thrust stage with some risers and seating around. Again, this would be for live productions for all ages. So, we've got plays, musicals, our children's theater we would bring over from the Park District, concerts, classes, somebody said, what about cater, catered cabaret? You know, great ideas, we are open to them. Again, an arts and a gathering space. There's also these classrooms right behind the, where the theater would be that are attached, that I think would make an amazing art gallery, where we could have exhibits. We could have a boutique for our local artisans to be able to sell things. And maybe it's just open when we have a show. But again, it's a place, it's that gathering space for our local artists and actors. So, some of the benefits of having an arts venue in our community, obviously, we're providing these experiences for our residents, not just for East Dundee, but like I said, for West, like we have, like back when, really, the region. And it's gonna bring visitors, both actors and audience members alike, to our community. People that maybe they weren't have come to East Dundee for any other reason, but now, they're gonna maybe have dinner before or after the show, well, or a drink, that sort of thing. American, Americans for the Arts estimates that for every person that comes and buys a ticket, it's an average of fifteen to thirty dollars that's spent on refreshments and other incidentals. So, and again, as an owner and part of the, you know, summit square owners association, we would be paying, our budget would allow us to pay into the dues and for the upkeep and maintenance of that building, which is, we know it's been a challenge, right? So, that would be the value benefit. On this timeline, we're looking at a ownership or agreement by the end of the month, so that we can get started with the fundraising, so that by next year at this time, probably sooner, but no later than December next year, we've got our first production, and maybe coordinates when we do a Christmas Carol assignment, Dickens and Dundee, something like that. Also, part of the timeline, I've met with this north Elgin, like our region's convention and visitor's parade. They love this concept. They're able to promote it for us, and totally have grants available. So, Governor Fritzger has set aside money here in the state of Illinois for attractions, events, festivals, projects that bring tourism, bring visitors to a community, and they feel like this is perfect. So, we're currently writing this track, and I'm here tonight. I know we can't really have a formal discussion about it, but just to maybe see, is this something y'all are interested in? Because I'd love to apply for those grant funds, and that can be used to put that air conditioning and heat in, which it needs, that electricity, to get the seats, to get the sound system, to get the light system. We have a budget prepared for that. And this, you know, again, it's a pretty sizable grant, but it's a first come, first served. So, we wanna get in with this first wave in the next couple of weeks there. So, that's kind of the timeline, that's the idea. I know something very different that I've talked with some of you about, and, you know, would just love to get, you know, be back on it, so.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Oh, sure.
So, how, how many performances a year do you see happening in a space like this?
So, there's a formula for sure. And I'd like to say, no one's gonna get rich off our community theater, right? So, but in order to break, even for a show, you gotta run it for at least two weekends. So, we're gonna put up ours to make an old ladies or the Odd Couple, that sort of thing. You wanna run it for two weekends in a row to make some money so you can pay for the next production. So, I would say, at least once a month, you're gonna have no less than two weekends of performances. The children's theater, right now, we do a fall program. We rehearse once a week for time weeks, and we have tech week, and then we've got a lead out of show. So, we've got two major groups doing that. So, we do that in the fall, we do that in the spring. And then, I did forget to mention, I've got some of my directors here, and also some of my star actors that have been in almost every production. And so, they, Deanna and Marcy both taught summer camps this year as well. So, it fits really nicely for those kids that are looking to do maybe athletics, but I wanna do theater, I wanna do something artistic. So, we have a summer camp as well. So, we know that formula works, and we just want to keep the lights on and pay the dues, that sort of thing. So, the children's theater comes over. I anticipate doing the fall, playing with adults, maybe around, you know, before the holiday time, before it gets too crazy. Doing something in the spring with adults, and then maybe something with a big summer musical for all ages. We can pop in concerts, you know, where we can feel. And then, we also know these other theater groups that are doing things in Elgin, that are painting our own life, quite honestly, we're still over to our venue, because it's really the newest and the best. People that are doing things in Palatine. So, we, we know that those other groups, we would rent the space out to them essentially, when we're not up with the production. So, we kind of set our calendar for the year, promote it, and then fill in for other groups. And then, for our exhibits, I would at least like to do a portery, like arts and public places program, and then really to see, I'm not sure, you know, local artists, is that something they're interested in having and helping?
Will these rooms, these art gallery rooms also sort of dressing rooms or?
I would, there's, there's two that are kind of directly behind the performance space, that if we actually run the laws back, one will be a dressing room, one will be envisioned a costume shop slash office, where we can sell tickets out of that sort of thing. And then, maybe a couple of other rooms that could serve as the art gallery, and then art and public places could even be kind of in the foyer lobby area as well, you know, leading up to that space.
And then, why is the, and then why, what, what is prompting you to wanna move out of the facility that you're currently in at the Rayco Center?
Sure, so, again, it's just, we wanna grow, and there's just limited times. They have all their preschool graduations on that stage. So, it's, it's just that, there's just not enough days and nights for everybody to do what they wanna do. So, they got, you know, all the L A, their recitals, that sort of thing that they have in there. And again, it was really designed for the seniors, so we love being in there, and I think it's a good fit. But we just can't expand footprint for arts and culture. We can keep doing what we're doing, no problem. It's also a really tiny stage. It doesn't have any backstage area. We use a closet where we do our costumes in. So, you know, as a plumber, you love to have a little bit of wing space, and then also a place to put your props or whatever. We're, it's tight. Right now, we're doing twenty, we've got twenty actors just because of COVID, but we've done up to thirty, it's a lot of volume on a, on a stage that's quite small. So, just a little bit, but, but the park district has been absolutely amazing and so supportive, and allowing us to try this, and I think it's been good, so.
Entrance and exit from the stage two is a little awkward.
Yeah.
I'm seeing the center.
It's like, yeah, it's a little bit of old record, and then, right, like kind of the passion and the commitment. So, I know we're grateful for it, and it's, but, like I said, I saw the space, even in the condition it's in, I just think there's so much to touch there.
Erin, can I ask you then, through the other classrooms that you're heading east along the hallway there, that would be used for, you know, galleries and so forth, do you envision any of those being actually work areas?
I mean, it would be nice, because sometimes we're building sets, you know, in our basement or our bridges. So, if we have a space that can be used to build as well, that would be wonderful. There'd be, it'd be great to be able to have just kind of a room where this is where we do improv or readings or that sort of thing, so where the stage is being used or a full production is up. We kind of have like a rehearsal space. Elliot, you know, he was taking panelists and somewhere, there's, there's all types of arts things that can be, be used in those rooms. There could be room, we put mirrors in it, and that could be the place where the, you, you know, if you're gonna be musically, you gotta have those dance rehearsals, right? So, I mean, really, it just lends itself well, you know, not just, you know, for arts and culture or for arts education, certainly. There's somebody that, that he is interested in possibly having a pottery class and having pottery up there, so. You're really cool.
Sure.
Yeah.
Erin, is there, in the proposal about the application, like, would you be like rented? And then, like, do you use the space, like how, what do you think about how that would go?
As far as the space of the classroom, I mean, I'd love to just take it out in all hands, and if you guys wanna give it, that would be great, right? So, but we are open to a very long term, maybe a lease agreement of some sort, just because, to put the infrastructure that's needed in that space, it's very unique. And so, we just, it's gonna be. And so we just, it's going to be, you know, there's a lot of fundraising. This is not something where you just go down to the MLHRS and say, yeah, we want to take out a loan. This is private fundraising for people that love the arts and support the arts, as well combined with the grants and with the annual future membership. And so, like I said, there's not a lot of money left initially to even hire. It's, you know, a lot of volunteers, and like I said, we volunteer a lot of time. So, you know, to get it up and running, it's like, you know, three years, but, you know, some type of long-term usage improvement, I would even want to use the work lease. Because again, I just, for us to afford the dues that are required, right? It's, it's an HOA building that, that, you know, everybody has to pay into. We want to make sure that we're doing right by that. And then, of course, utilities, and, and be able to pay the royalties for the shows. We want to do unique things that may bear a little cost royalty, but at the same time, we want to be able to afford to put on the Sound of Music, or Sound Pacific, that sort of thing, and some different means. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Do those fees go down as time goes on?
Does what?
Do those fees, then you have to pay the royalties?
No, the royalties, the royalties will be based on the number of seats. So we're thinking 100, 150, times the number of performances you're doing, times your ticket price. So most of the royalty companies are pretty normal, and they kind of have that formula. So, hey, we want to do it for three weeks, this is how many tickets we're projected as well, and then they give you those costs. And so, and that's where that formula comes into, for a reason, we got to run it for three weeks, just because, right, they're still expensive. In the past, we were using a live orchestra that's very, very expensive, but now a lot of these companies offer orchestrations, so that you can have the music without having to pay equity. You know, maybe this is a challenge, to be honest, for sure.
Anybody have questions?
All right, thank you, thank you for letting me take the time. And thank you. Thank you. Bye. Bye. Bye.
Good evening. You know, I wasn't going to speak, however, I've been listening to your levy tonight. I've got 22 years on the Park District, and I've got 24 years as a village trustee here in this village. I was also on the board when we enacted the resolution that you guys would follow the PTEL tax cap legislation for passing the levy. While I too don't want to see property taxes go up, I don't feel you guys have levied. I don't know if you guys want to reconsider, because this year, for the first time since PTEL was put in place in 1992, the, PTEL says you can levy the lesser of 5% or CPI. Well, for the first time ever, CPI this year is going to be over 5%. The other thing too, is by levying, what you're levying, you're not capturing any new growth. Now, I know there's not a tremendous amount of new growth here in East Dundee, but I believe this year, the Caterpillar building will be going on the tax rolls. So levying a 1.4% increase isn't even going to what the PTEL allows you to go through, hearing that you've got a police pension that has to be met by, granted, it's a number of years away, but the other thing too, that doesn't make sense to me is, I know at the Park District, we levy the max, and then we enact, Attorney Molina could help you with this, we enact a refunding ordinance, plus the county won't give a PTEL organization any more than they're due. So at the Park District, we typically levy 20% more. We never get 20% more, but we levy it so that we capture all of the CPI and all of the new growth. Because if you don't capture it, you lose it forever. You can't, you can't go back and get it. Now, East Dundee is a home rule community, so you guys could go and capture it because you're home rule. But if you follow the strict rules of being under PTEL, if you don't, if you don't capture it, you lose it forever. So I don't think the levy, I don't think, Brandis, the, I don't think the levies are due until the 15th? What's that?
Second Tuesday in December. So we have time.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah, you might have to have a special meeting next Monday, but I just wanted to...
Okay.
Thank you.
At work, we'll have a discussion on that one too, because, you know, just the simple math that I did, if we went to 2%, the amount of money generated from that levy would put us where we need to be, with what letter by name and titles we need to be. Yeah, it, it, you know, bringing in $690,000 is great, but if in order for us to make and really be on track with what our requirements are for the pension and the amount of time that we have left, if it's estimated that we need to be at 1.1 this year, man, we're 400 grand short. And, you know, I don't know, and where that could come from, we didn't do a lot of data. So that was why I called you and discussed the idea of taking it to 2.1. And if what Frank is suggesting, that we have the ability, at least this year, to go up as high as 5, I think we might want to reconsider that amount, so. But that was what I said too, for several years, we'll have to consider, but we can, because of the one rule, right?
If you guys didn't have a public hearing, then you can only go to 4.999%. Because to go over 5, you have to have a public hearing.
A hearing, okay, I got you, okay. Good info, thanks for the point there. So, okay, so, let's see, we're moving on, and I guess that would be the conclusion of our meeting. Does anybody else have a? Yeah, yeah, does anybody else have anything they'd like to address the board on? Let's see, none, okay, then we're going to adjourn into executive session, and so we can have that right in. I'm looking to close to the exec, uh, public, executive session, close to public. And media, under provisions of the Illinois Meeting Act 5IVLCS 120/2. This would be for C1 personnel, and we will adjourn out of the executive session, not coming back to the session.
And we have C5 and C6?
Yes, the sale of property. C5 and C6, as of now.
Second.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Sodder?
Yes.
Trustee Cooney?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Sagnano?
Yes.
Trustee Triger?
Yes.
And President Mahoney?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you all for coming tonight. You know, that's all.